Morning, everyone. I will call this meeting to order. It's 9:30. And I would ask that we stand for a moment of silent reflection. In our thoughts, we keep the people of Quebec and those that live in fear around the world, also the local that have lost loved ones and possessions in fires recently here in Lampton Shores. Thank you. I would ask if anyone has a disclosure of pecuniary interest to declare it now or at the time. Seeing none, I would ask if there's anything to rise and report from the in-camera session?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Delegations. We have a number of delegations, and I would call on a motion to allow the delegations within the bar. Moved by Councilor McGugan, second by Councilor Deputy Warden McCharles. All in favor of that? Opposed? That is carried. Our first delegation is Mr. George Malley, Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership. We have the presentation in our agenda, but Mr. Malley is not able to attend this morning. So we will receive that with the other delegations and move on to Item B. I don't believe there's anyone else here from SLEP to make the presentation. Item B is Joy Sim-Robins and Vicky Prahl regarding Tourism Sarnia-Lampton, and I would call them to make their presentation. Welcome.
We appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you again about Tourism Sarnia-Lampton. Vicky and I are part of a team, and I would like to bring notice that our entire tourism team is here, your tourism team. Vicky and I, as well as Bev Hordowski, Chris Bregman, Kyle Morrison, and Leona Allen. Jointly, we have over 135 years of tourism experience, and I think that's well to be noted. That being said, we are also very committed to our mission statement of bringing more tourists to the area, getting them to stay longer, getting them to spend more money, and to get them to return. TSAL is Lampton County's destination marketing organization. We cover everyone. We're here to represent all municipalities within Lampton County. We're also the accepted organization through provincial and national tourism organizations and international tourism organizations. We also partner with regional other tourism areas, being one, for example, is Chatham-Kent and Tourism Windsor-Essays Pele Island. And we are a fast and hard partner with Southwestern Ontario Tourism Corporation, SWOTZI, the regional tourism organization one. There's a number of memberships we belong to, but I think the most important is to know that tourism in Lampton County is the third-largest industry. Here is some of the recent stats, total visitor stats, some of our marketing, our Navigate publication. We're happy to announce that we will be adding all the trails in Lampton County to our map for 2017. Again, we're very fast partners with SWOTZI. We're doing some digital and social media work, and we are really putting a lot of emphasis on this, knowing most people are using their phones like computers now. So we really need to be focused, most of our marketing, to the digital and social media area. One of the other things that we've been doing is bringing in some travel media writers. And I think it's important to know that when we facilitate a writer coming into the area, we usually set up the itinerary, we book all the appointments, and we arrange their hotel. And one, for example, that was in this year was the freelance writer Jim Byers. And you may have heard of him in the media lately. He came in in June, and we facilitated his visit. He came in and he spent a day and a half in Sarnia and then went up to Grand Ben. And through that, you will probably have heard in the media, all the communities that he visited last year, he picked six communities that he thought should be must-sees for the 150th Birthday of Canada. And as you may have heard in the media yesterday, Sarnia was one of those six, one of the only communities in all of Ontario that got picked. So that's a real win. Sports tourism. I'm going to let Vicky talk a little bit about some of the sports tourism things.
Okay. Thank you, Joy. So last year, we hosted the Blue Water International Grand Fondo. It was a brand-new event. It was sold out with over 500 cyclists from across North America. This year, we will be hosting the event again, and our target is 750 cyclists. The tour has a 50K, 100K, and 150K course, and it goes throughout Lampton County. We also, last year, hosted the Great Waterfront Trail Adventure with over 150 cyclists. And we were the only site in Canada to host the December series, which was the Canadian Women's Hockey Team versus the U.S. National Hockey Team. It was a sold-out event at the Progressive Auto Sale Arena, and we, obviously, there was a lot of coverage from that. We also hosted some additional new sporting events, the Bauer International Invitation Hockey Tournament with over 74 teams. Again, that is coming back next year, and the Nations Cup Hockey Tournament, as well as other existing annual tournaments that we facilitate every year.
Thanks, Vicky. We'll move on to arts and culture. What's in your presentation is just a very small sample of what events and programs that we've been involved in. One that comes to mind is the Victoria Playhouse in Petrolia, how we did a joint marketing piece and marketed to the U.S., and they had a very successful year last year. Group tours. We're still going after the group tour market. It's an important market for us. We have a lot of product that is really group-friendly. And our location, being in Point Edward and where we are right under the bridge in the visitor's center, affords us the ability to be a stop for buses. They come in to use our washroom. We provide a refreshment to them, and we're able to do a sales call on group buses that we usually don't see at any other time during our marketing. Meetings and conferences, there's a number that are happening this year. Visitor services. Again, our location is very key. I think it's interesting to know that since we've moved into that area, the flood of people that come into that building far surpass anything we've seen in any other location we've been in. Part of it is the draw and the location of being right under the bridge. Again, with the American dollar being what it is, we're seeing a lot more visitors from the U.S. And I think it's a number to really understand that last year, in 2016, there was over 82,000 people that came through the doors of that center. One of the other things we're doing in visitor services is now we have a retail area. We are working with SLEP on a business plan, on a retail business plan, that will help us and will look at best practices to revenue generate for not only the retail center but also for the boardroom that we rent out. Here's a number of consumer shows. The Outdoor Adventure Show is one of them. We did the two motorcycle shows in Cleveland. We did a bike show. We've done some food and wine shows, beverage shows, in Toronto. And onward to 2017. 2017 is a very exciting year for tourism. Not only is it Canada's 150, but there's a number of really interesting things happening in our area. I don't know whether you have had the time to look at the Next Stop video that was done from Alveston to Thorndale, but I would urge you to do that. We partnered with SWOTZI on that. And to date, as of yesterday, we got the latest stats. Our video, this video series, there's four in the series, was seen more than 1.4 million times. So obviously, we're doing a second video. One of the other things we think is very exciting for our area is the UNESCO designation. That's the application that's gone in, as well as the further development of the Lampton Shores Trails. And I think the one last thing I want to say that I think is very exciting for the whole county of Lampton is our product development program. We're working on a program right now. We started in Lampton Shores. We had a meeting earlier this month with over 12 stakeholders, and we will be holding our first workshop sometime later this month to start developing a program that we will create and we will expand throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Very informative. Any questions from council? Councilor Brickowitz.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Joy, you mentioned a little bit about facilitating the visitors here. And there's one particular group that always gets attention every year. We have all the transient boaters. They come in, and there's tremendous amount of wealth stacked on those boats. And I've been at some, a lot of them are foreigners, you know, from the United States and so on. And some of them invite me, and they don't seem to really connect with the attractions within the Lampton County. You know, sometimes, you know, I mention them, galleries, some of them may, may not. But do you have some sort of targeted approach towards this wealth that is trapped on those boats without anywhere, you know, without any directions to where to spend the money?
So our travel guide or our experience guide that we provide has all the attractions and things to do in our area. All the marinas in Lampton County have copies of our experience guides. So for example, if you go to the Sarnia Bay Marina, they have a rack there with our travel guides. We also work closely with the different marinas. We've gone to different boat shows with them to not only promote the marinas but also to promote the things to see and do while they're here. Again, a lot of it is just continuing to, you know, explain what we have and obviously to continue to obviously recommend different things to see and do. A lot of the marinas also do have shuttle services where they take the boaters downtown, for example, in Sarnia, or they'll take them to a restaurant. So again, we're encouraging that, and we're encouraging going to different boat shows and obviously getting the word out of all the things to see and do in our area.
But I know all about the racks. I know about the shuttles and so on. Do you do some marketing efforts, like it's so easy, so inexpensive, like a personal email blast to the people who are there? The marina probably has some database of those personal contacts with its email, Facebook, whatever. Have you tried anything of that?
We have an email blast that we use for consumers. So we do send out information about things to see and do in our area to people who sign up for our newsletter. But it's certainly a great idea to try and tap into maybe other email databases that the marinas might have. Again, it might not be able to come directly from us because obviously there's some legal thing that you can't share your database with other organizations. If they sign up for the marina newsletter, obviously, they have to be sent information strictly from the marina. But we could probably get around that and look at other avenues to target that market better.
Tell me one more little, one more. That's it. Have you looked at the experience of Port Colborne, how they're able to actually get the, you know, they have the marina there too, and they seem to be extremely successful in getting those people, you know, to spend their money?
We do work with... Colborne is part of our RTO1, so we have worked with them in the past. But again, you know, there's always room for improvement in that area, for sure.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. I look forward to another great season. Item C, we have Mr. Ralph Ganter and Ms. Paula Rehume-Zimmer updating a status on the Withdrawal Management Detox Facility. So I'd call them to the front.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to begin, and then I'll hand it over to Ralph. So thank you for the invitation, for sharing any updates and the news of the work that we have been doing. My, although I've been new to Blue Water Health over this past year, it's certainly become very quickly apparent that we share the priority, Blue Water Health and Erie Saint Clair and the county council on this item of Withdrawal Management Services. And although I am new to Sarnia for a year, I have been part of the conversation of Withdrawal Management Services as a leader in mental health and addictions for the past 14 years. So to begin with, we did start a community profile. So in 2013 is actually when Erie Saint Clair Lynn approached Blue Water Health and asked them to engage in this venture. It wasn't a Blue Water Health initiative initially, but was asked to become involved. And at that time, in 2014, Blue Water Health did engage in one of, actually, Canada's leading authority on the issue, Dr. Brian Rush. And Dr. Rush is one of the, is very well-authored in the area of Withdrawal Management Services from the Centre of Addictions and Mental Health in Toronto. And at that time, they did a community inventory of needs and shared and hosted several venues with stakeholders in the community and created a report identifying the needs and recommendations for services. So the community profile is, it's not news to the individuals on the council, that these are the items that were highlighted in the report, that Dr. Brian Rush and at the time, Debbie Hook, who was the project manager of Withdrawal Management Services, had identified. So from that, they did proceed then to create a, so from that, we have moved into a capital planning project. And the capital planning project initially was submitted actually in 2015 and early in 2015 had been approved by Erie Saint Clair Lynn Board. And then subsequently, the capital planning process has been changed, and it had been altered so that capital planning projects under the amount of $10 million would actually then follow a different stream, a stream that we've been advised is a more streamlined process for a lower request of less than $10 million. And this project specifically was in an estimation of around $8.8 million. So we qualified to switch streams and go to the capital project that the Ministry of Health identified for under $10 million. So from that, we did switch gears, and we did submit the proposal to the Erie Saint Clair Lynn. And in the October board meeting, the Erie Saint Clair Lynn had approved our pre-capital planning submission, and from that had gone on to the Ministry of Health. There was only a short, brief response from the Ministry of Health with just a few questions, and within less than a week turnaround time, they had all of their replies and indicated they had the information that they required from Blue Water Health. So we are in the process right now of, the Blue Water Health submission has been in the Ministry of Health's hands since it was endorsed by the Erie Saint Clair Lynn Board in October. So just a quick recap, the process for Withdrawal Management Services was always meant to be a phased-in process. And it's very critical to understand this because even similar to right now, when we see our emergency departments overflowing, we're starting to say, oh, jeez, maybe we missed the ball on actually creating a more robust primary healthcare system sooner, and it may avoid emergency department visits. So very much like Withdrawal Management Service, the important piece for us was start with phase one, and that was creating the community Withdrawal Management Services. And that's where we have a team who go out into the community, individuals' homes, or the individuals come to our office. And there is a larger number of the community that successfully withdraw from substances in that venue. And in fact, it's more appealing, they don't have to leave their homes, they have their family support, their friends, and can get the professional services. So we started with the phased approach and very deliberately, because that was the one that was going to reach more individuals in our community, knowing that the bedded approach was phase two and absolutely a critical piece, just like an emerged department is. But we wanted to get the phase one right and become that resource to the community as soon as we could. So since then, October 2014, we have served over 800 individuals in Sarnia-Lampton. These are individuals with a variety of addictions needs, and they have been served in the framework of staying closer to home and providing the service where some individuals may be able to maintain employment, are able to maintain their childcare, and reside in their home with the proper services coming to them. And then over 4,500 visits in that process. So we are at phase two, and phase two is the bedded service. It is a bedded service of a total of 24 beds with three different compositions of the beds. And this is the process that we are now underway and have done a lot of work preparing for. So in this process, we work very closely with many of our provincial peers in this area. In fact, I'm on the board of the Addictions and Mental Health Ontario and have many communications and contacts with folks who are running Withdrawal Management Services. We work closely with Hotel Duke Grace, who run a Withdrawal Management Service, very similar to the size that we are looking at. We understand what the footprint is. We know what their budget is. We know the FTEs, how much it costs to operate, from food services to their client travel. So we are ready and prepared with all of that detail. However, the challenge certainly is, right now, Blue Water Health, our CEO, Michael Payne, had communicated clearly to our staff this year that Blue Water Health has committed to no layoffs and for budgetary purposes. And with that, we are very diligent in any investments that we are making and cannot take the liberty of proceeding without this, the approval of our pre-capital plan. So we are extremely looking, we are looking forward to that. We've had ongoing conversations with Ralph and the team at Erie Saint Clair Lynn. Everyone understands the urgency. Certainly, the hospital, on a daily basis, we hear the communication in the community. We have family members. We have Ms. Laurie Hicks in the audience with us, who's on our steering committee, who unfortunately tells the tragic story of losing her son to fentanyl overdoses. We are reminded on a daily basis the urgency and don't take that need lightly and are very committed to hit the ground running when we do receive response from the Ministry of Health. And I'll hand it over to Ralph.
Very good. Thanks very much, and thanks for having me here today as well. Just a couple of comments, fairly similar to what Paula had mentioned. I believe when I was here last time, we had talked about the fact that there was a new way of doing community capital. And I think when I was here, that policy hadn't yet been released, and of course, it was released last summer. So it really is an expedited process in terms of, you know, less steps for approving and getting a capital project underway. So as Paula had mentioned, our recommendation was that Blue Water Health submit this under this community capital, which they did. And as Paula had mentioned, we had our board meeting here in Lampton County on the 24th of October. Lynn Board approved it. We got our briefing documents up to the ministry right away on the 29th, so we expedited it with all of our due diligence and preparation for that. As Paula has said, ministry questions have really been very, very modest, usually with a project such as this. We get lots of pushback in terms of size, the amount of beds, the functions, based on the work to date, based on the work that Paula has done. No questions around that. So that's usually one of those hurdles that is a signal for us. As you can imagine, knowing that I was coming here today, I was asking the ministry on Monday, you know, it'd be nice if I had something in hand, because obviously, you want to know what the next steps are. I don't have that yet because they're just finalizing their review. But the comments certainly are is the project is well-aligned with our own Lynn plans. Definitely, the project is aligned with provincial opioid strategy that was announced this year. Obviously, very well-aligned with local needs. So we're just waiting. It's imminent. That's the best word I can say. What I'm not in control of is capital funding. I'm in control of the operating funding. So we have already, as you know from our past motions, put the dollars aside in terms of operations, or we'll carve it out. Next phase for us, sorry, I should have a glass of water here. Next phase for us is when the approval comes to go into the planning phase, then the engagement really starts to take place, design and so forth. So, yeah, I should use this. Small. Do the quick gulp, but yep, we're good.
Questions? We're sure. Councilor Bushy?
Mr. Warden, to the speakers, you know what? I try to contain myself for what I hear, your speeches, good eloquent speeches, and I can't help but I think there's something wrong. Since 2011, we have been dealing with this issue. Now, if I was trying to draw, and I don't drink myself, but if I was drinking and trying to dry up, 2011, I'll be underground before I, before that building is finished. Somehow, there's something wrong somewhere. I mean, you could talk to me for one hour, I'm not happy with it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Councilor Bradley.
Excuse me, thanks for the presentation. The definition of expedited, and I appreciate that, and I don't doubt the sincerity of everyone at Blue Water Health and the Lynns trying to move this forward. But the frustration at this, I guess, and you've just heard it from someone here beside me, is that this county council is offered repeatedly to take whatever actions are necessary. And this county council committed, what, 250,000 five years ago? And another individual in the community committed $1 million for this project. And the frustration is when we hear about the, it's gone to the ministry, or the Kremlin, or whatever you want to call it. There seems to be nothing the community can do when we ask, what can we do to support this? You know, and Warden, we've discussed this here about a delegation to the minister. There are opportunities there. We want to help, I guess. We want to help you. But we always get the sense that you don't dare try to interfere politically with the ministry. And all we want to do is help. That's what it is. Very simple message. And, you know, I'm concerned on location, that the location, wherever that may be, may end up costing us another year or two if the zoning, and we've had some conversation on this, the zoning isn't appropriate wherever it is, then we're going to be delayed further. So I guess the question is this, is what can this county council do to help both organizations expedite in the fullest meaning of that word, this project?
Best recommendations is, you know, the commentary you're making, obviously, is one that's listened to. You know, any type of letter writing or support that you want to do that's formal... And then we can move on with Stage Two, which is actually that development of, you know, the implementation plans.
Follow-up, Counselor Bradley.
And then is, when will the communities, because we don't know where the location is, when will that become public knowledge? Because as you know from any of these types of projects, whether it be a women's shelter, a group home, there are often issues that come up that can have great impact on the approval of those particular projects. So again, you know, the message is really simple, is that we want to help, we want to know how to do that. You know, is this county council going off to see the Minister of Health? Is that going to help or is it going to hurt? And be honest with us, if you think that it would negatively impact on the project, then tell us that. But we just want to move this forward for the sake of the people and the woman in this room, who we both know, who lost her son two years ago this March. That's all we want to do.
By the time you get to that point, we'll already be at that point, where we'll have some feedback as to where this is going.
Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, Warden Weaver and members of county council. And thank you, Mr. Gander and Ms. Rumsima for the presentation. I thought it was excellent. With regard to the initial proposal that we put forward, and you mentioned that there was a switching of gears, and it was mentioned at Committee AM as well. What guarantee do we have that what we bring forward now isn't going to suffer the same fate as that the ministry says, well, you know, you have to switch gears? That's my first question. My second question is, given the fact that this particular government now is on a very tight timeline, if they sign all the documents, then is it cast in stone and cannot be reversed by another government coming in?
The question is, we even have letters from past Ministers of Health, even as far back as 2001, that are still honored. So that's the case. Did you want to talk a little bit about the process that you want to go through in terms of engagement into the next, because I think that answers the question we had over here.
Yep. So the actual, the next process, the step two of the capital process that was up on, oh, it's not on, that was up on the slides, is the area, is the piece that we identify site selection. So we are very interested in obtaining some resources for community commercial or real estate within the Sarnia proper to create the inventory of opportunities where we may select a site and then have the community engagement on the response to that. I know that we've done, actually, we've been fortunate that Lori Hicks, she has in fact done a diligent review of contacting more than 75% of the 28 sites in Ontario that are operating. And Lori has had terrific responses on getting feedback on the lessons learned from the sites, some of them who have just become operational, who have had some fresh, good points about the importance of proximity and the community engagement. And so we have even done some of that surveying more recently to make sure that people are aware of the conversations that they've had in other developments and what we'll be looking for when we do obtain the resource of a community broker. But again, that's where we are kind of stalled, where we can't continue to invest anymore until the capital for the pre-capital planning allows us to provide some resources to do that.
So is, for us, I know the hospital and ourselves, you know, save for a moment that we don't get the ministry approval, but I'll just say that, you know, the signals we have are pretty good. We still want to put together contingencies just in case. So that usually is at leasehold side, rental-leasehold improvements. The preference for us, preference for myself, is I don't want to put operating dollars into something like that. I'd rather have it go into frontline workers, whether it be nurses or counselors and so forth. So for us, using the capital from, or using the capital expertise from the ministry helps us in so many different ways. Helps us with the risk, I guess is one way of saying it. But also in terms of the expertise as to what does a withdrawal management look like based on best practices? What do you have to watch out for in terms of infection control and all the elements that go with it? What's best in terms of flow, especially when you're, you know, having people come in and get discharged? So for us, because there are other withdrawal managements, and as Paula had said, one of the models that's being looked at is the one in Windsor, but there's models across the province and internationally. So using the ministry capital process, you know, we get access to some of those best practices. So there's a clear advantage and a benefit to do that. And that's why, you know, there's impatience, but at the same time, there's so much value for us to go that route. But the big one is, you know, if our contingency had to be to carve out operating dollars for capital, I'd rather have it go into frontline service. And I think, you know, everybody agrees with that.
Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I just, I appreciated Mr. Gander's comment about 2001 because I think that was the second last time that we started this process in trying to move forward with this type of facility. And the last time was in 2011, is what my colleague, Mr. Bushi, had just mentioned. We looked at a number of different sites at that time. It's a very difficult siting piece. And I think Mr. Bradley had spoken about finding out locations and that sort of things and working with our staff, but I wonder if we aren't at the spot that depending what happens here, or I shouldn't say it doesn't depend on what actually happens with the allocation of capital, but I think that piece could be being worked at with our own staff folks. And as Mike had said about the county itself had put money aside to try and kickstart this whole project, and there is other folks in the community that are very generous to this type of thing because they have such a soft heart for the people in this community. And I'm wondering what the status of that site selection or a suite of sites, because it could be 18 months to 24 months and beyond by the time, if you have to start looking at rezonings, that's not an easy process because this is not an easy facility. So I'm just wondering if we could have maybe an update of where we are in that part of the process? And if nothing else, maybe we could start that process, moving it forward quicker and work with our staff here at the county to see what we can do to help facilitate that and the good folks if the preferred area is going to be in the city, have them on board as well and that triangle thing working together to make it happen. And our meeting with the minister, if we're fortunate enough to do it, is going to be the end of February. It's not that far away when I look back at the last six years of trying to make this project work. And Mr. Gander, if we have some indication before, then that'd be just, you know, wonderful. It'd put us over the moon, but the track record hasn't been very forthcoming to meet that objective.
Well, I did indicate, actually, our steering committee just this past week had discussed the next step of creating the, of engaging with a community broker for at least a site inventory so that we can refresh what, understanding what exists and what exists within the variables that we're looking for, for the proper site. So we would welcome actually working with the individuals, with your team, to again, do some of the, whatever groundwork we can do in advance of, while we wait or in advance of the final response from the ministry, we'd be happy to do that. And in fact, is on our, was just a recent conversation just last week at the steering committee, that we're ready also to do, to keep taking next steps versus just kind of being in a holding pattern.
And if I can just add to that is, the critical step is size and scope, which gets sorted out right now, right? That helps with that next step.
Counselor McDougall, then Counselor Berkowitz.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of county council and to our guests here today. I think around this council chamber, there's probably not one of us that is without some personal experience with friends or local residents who are struggling with mental health and addiction. So what I would like to say is that as somebody who lives in Sarnia, who works in Sarnia, and sees on the ground the devastating effect of addiction on families, on community, that I have appreciated the time that was taken to bring this project along because the detox facility, the acute stage of withdrawing is the first step along a long lifetime journey of withdrawing and managing dependency at whatever level that is with drugs or alcohol. And for me, it has always been that I'm on the side of Withdrawal Management Services because at the end of the day, we also all know that people often have one or two takes through a detox process before things start to kick in. And in having had the chance to see the Hotel Due facility and to see the Withdrawal Management program after that, and to live in the heart of Sarnia, I think that community confidence in a facility that's going to be developed and properly resourced is something I've heard over and over and over again and have taken the opportunity to meet with Blue Water Health. And Paula, to your, to your team of managers at Blue Water Health, for those of us who have gone and had those one-on-one conversations, that has been very helpful to build confidence. So that what, you know, I can appreciate that once we hear, and hopefully that will be soon, it's around whatever the ministry approves, that we can continue that confidence building and go out to the community. John McCharles was at the meeting that we were brought up to date last week with Blue Water Health. And again, I have appreciated that, that the community engagement piece, I think, is percolating along. And community engagement is what's going to bring this to the next level of a successful facility. But all along, I have wanted something that was properly resourced to build, and I'm hearing this morning that we're almost there with that, and adequately resourced to properly manage because I know far too many people who are struggling in our community. I know far too many people who've lost, not just the family that is in the gallery today, but people who have lost family members to addiction. I know it's been long, but we're almost there, and I think we need to have confidence that we'll, and you've heard from all of us this morning, that we're willing to help politically in whatever way we can to move this along. So thank you for the update and thank you for the steps towards confidence building because that is the most, that's the most critical thing now moving forward.
I would add, and I absolutely agree, and I would say our Withdrawal Management folks, especially who are attending homes and seeing individuals in the emerge, are just as passionate to make sure this happens as soon as possible. We know when an individual comes to our emergency department and we don't have the residential program, it's a missed opportunity to engage that individual. And we need that additional tool in the entire model that we're delivering right now to successfully reach and make the impact that we want to. So thank you.
Counselor Brusawitz?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Paula, you mentioned Sarnia and doing the inventor of potential sites, right?
Yes.
Well, that's not any good if you do not secure those, you know, the time between the actual zoning and so on. So do you have any specific money set aside to option and secure this property for viability if they're chosen?
Well, that's actually, Ralph, I don't know if you're, if you're saying something, but that's actually what the Stage Two specifically targets. Stage Two is the funding that they provide to do all of the planning. So bringing in the consultants, we've been working with the consultants for the past two years. They've been involved in, in understanding what the scope is. We know what the footprint is. Again, you know, we have square footage, we know what our needs are. So, but the next step is, you know, resourcing the additional planning that's required and completing a survey and someone doing the legwork. But I do, you know, there is opportunity to do some of that collegially with the individuals who have identified that just today, and we're open to proceed with that phase. But for the full, robust plan of inventory and needs and creating the functional plan and the site plan, then we do need to bring along consulting services. And that's where we require the pre-capital approval that gives us that funding to do that.
Question, Warden Weaver. Like, there is going to be a lag time between, and how much money do you actually have in this options funding to secure the property for whatever it takes 16, 18 months? Because without that, you know, you can go through this step, and if none of this property actually is secured, it's just spinning the wheels without moving forward.
Actually, that's exactly what we are saying. We're actually in a pattern of waiting to see the approval so that we can have the revenue and the resources to take this next. Because it is an investment and not knowing, certainly Ralph shares the optimism of the response, but not knowing that guaranteed, it still is a risk of investment if we don't know definitely where the Ministry of Health is going to, what direction they're going to point us in.
I should add just as well, as part of this second phase, the work is actually looking at what are the different ways to, you know, put into place. One could be, you know, a build all by itself. A second one is a partnership with other health service providers within our funding envelopes, or perhaps anybody else. And then as we said, the third one is, you know, perhaps it is just a simple, you know, rental-leasehold improvement. So that's what is decided on in the second phase. And part of what comes behind that is, you know, for the standards in terms of size of rooms and so forth. So now that we've got the scope and the volumes in a sense set out, you know, the space tables are in a sense put together, and that helps you with, you know, that next step. One other thing, well, I was just going to mention, the other thing that, you know, we're kind of thinking as well is, is that although we're looking at this being in some kind of, some kind of a site, is there any kind of interim step we can do as we're waiting, right? And if you look at this, it's residential withdrawal management, so it tends to be, it is a community type of program. So one of the key thoughts that I have as well is, is there an interim step that we can do is, you know, while this is happening, can it be located in any kind of space, even within Blue Water Health? So something we want to entertain, is there anything like that that we can do? So we want to try to look at all the different options here as well.
Thank you, Counselor McGugan.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, members of county council. We've had a great discussion. I do say thanks for the information. Maybe I've missed something through the past years. Should it not be, or why can it not be just attached to what you got there now at Blue Water Health? And you should be able to find some room there without going the whole, a lot of a zoning and OMB hearings and all the rest. Because we're three to five years away as we stand here today. I just say thanks for the information.
Perhaps the only response I can give is that the way Withdrawal Management is defined is, it is meant to be outside of a hospital. Could be on a campus. If you look at, if you look at the Windsor example, the Withdrawal Management is in the larger campus of the Windsor hospitals, but it tends to be something that's different because you want it in a different environment than a hospital, and you don't want it institutional, right? All those factors.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I think we can acknowledge the frustration and the willingness of this council to move forward with something. And if there's anything we can do, please ask, and we will do what we can in the background and with the ministry. So, thank you. Our next presentation is Mr. Santo Gorno, and he has concerns regarding the Suncor and the Creative County Fund. I would ask him to come forward and address the council.
Thank you, Warden Weaver and the councillors for allowing me to speak today. I know this has become a contentious issue, and before I start, I want to emphasize that any comments and criticisms should not be viewed as a direct commentary on the character or or integrity of any members of council or staff. I think they've done an outstanding job. It should not be viewed as a criticism of the Creative County Committee. I fully support what they do, and again, they've done an outstanding job. I believe everyone involved has the best interests of the county at heart, and I just wanted to make that clear. I also wanted to speak, and I think you've all seen the correspondence I presented, I did want to comment on the activities of this council over the past several years. You've been extremely supportive of the community and their concerns for the use of turbines in the community, and I listed a number of them. The council unanimous support for a motion from Wayne Fleet to ask for a moratorium on turbines until more information could be obtained. You've declared the county an unwilling host, participated in a divisional hearing in support of a family in Huron County. And by the way, I received a number of calls from around the province after that expressing admiration for the kind of support that we're lucky enough to have in Lampton County. And the county also participated in two environmental review tribunals, one for the Cedar Point Project and one for Jericho. And the main concern for the county was the traffic safety of the pylons placed in close proximity to the roadways. They weren't successful in convincing the tribunal, but their concerns were fully justified. As I pointed out, we have had a traffic fatality in the neighboring county when a vehicle left the road and hit one of the transmission line pylons. So when I was writing all this down, I was feeling a bit remiss because I don't believe that we've really done an adequate job of conveying our gratitude to this council and also to the staff who have helped us. We truly are appreciative, and I didn't want to give the impression that we're being a little bit backbiting or untoward towards this council. I did want to go over some of the details. I'm not going to read the correspondence in verbatim. I would want to point out some of the things that came out from the records, and one is on the timelines. And the original, it was Suncor that initiated the original contact with the county regarding the donation, and they also insisted on having the donation credited to the Cedar Point Project, not to Suncor next era. And they're also insistent on the timing of the announcement for early December. I didn't really get the significance of that until the announcement last week that they had sold their share of the Cedar Point Project to a firm in Toronto, Fiera. And so it all fit in. This was a publicity play. They wanted to dress up the project and make it more presentable for sale. There's nothing wrong with that, but I'm feeling a little bit irritated that they used the county and the county committee as part of their plan to improve the image of the project. It's not illegal, but I think it was probably inappropriate for them to do that. I did mention a couple of things about whether it was appropriate to have discussions with Suncor without involving the entire council. I do know that the committee is, the Creative County Committee is an arm's length committee, which is to operate independently of council, but there are four council members on it. And I think that it would not be inappropriate to receive advice and direction from the council, especially if there's a contentious issue that we know will result in some comment from the community. You know, whether or not we can resolve it today or not is another matter. I think there were a couple of opportunities to bring this forward to council. There were some milestones in October and November, and we had a council meeting on November the 2nd and another one November the 30th where it could have been brought forward. And again, I'm not disputing the intention or the character, but I think it was a missed opportunity to get some creative wisdom from the entire council. And going forward, I think we need to look at how we deal with these issues in the future. And I know that there's been some people that expressed that we should be more pragmatic. The turbines are here. I mean, they're operating. They're not going to go away, but, you know, we have a number of extreme options. You know, we can treat them as pariahs, or we can treat them as upstanding pillars of the community. And I think the best answer is somewhere in between. I think we need to have that discussion because right now we don't really seem to know how we should be dealing with these corporations. And that was really all I had to say.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any questions or comments from council members? Counselor Gillis Land?
Thank you for your report. I happen to be one of the councilors that's on that committee, and I congratulate you for bringing this out because a lot of this information was not available to the council or the committee. You, through the Freedom of Information Act, you have brought some information to me. I didn't agree with this donation. I thought we should have taken it to county council. As a matter of fact, a later motion in our meeting was that we did need to talk to county council about donations. I voted against that because I think that's wrong. So I'm going to congratulate you for bringing this information forward. There seems to me a lot of things are done without our information, and it seems like it does work around county council meetings. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Warden McCharles?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, Members of County Council. I think it's a little bit too late to do anything about what's happened, but I would like to propose a motion if that's possible. And I'll read you what I've scribbled down here, so it might need some wordsmithing, but that in the future, all financial implications involving the County of Lampton and wind farms operations come before county council for direction prior to any approvals. Can I move that?
Is there a second for that motion? Counselor Bradley? Discussion on that? Counselor Bradley?
Can I thank the presenter for his presentation, too? From a county councillor's point of view, the fact that we had a longstanding position over two or three years is the disturbing fact to find out that, you know, common sense says that there would be issues on this donation, just by the nature of what's happened in this chamber. And I appreciate what Mr. Gillis Land said because we don't have that information of what's really occurred within the committee process. But, you know, whether it be a landfill that we're opposed to, and there's lots of examples around this room, it seems to me that there should be a process that kicks in to say, this should go to the full county council. And so I welcome what Mayor McCharles is bringing forward, and there's no point in, you know, retribution about the past and everything, but it's such a clear issue for us that, you know, if I could even add to that, I'm more than willing to reaffirm our longstanding position against industrial wind turbines and the lack of local input on decisions to put them in this community. But I applaud what you're doing because I think that's exactly what we need to do. Forget about the past, but this should not have happened.
Counselor Case?
Well, I also agree with the motion, and I was caught completely by surprise when I saw through the media that this gift had been given to the Creative County Committee, and Warwick Township Council was completely, again, surprised and not very happy about the situation. Comes back to communications, and I think Mayor McCharles' motion will help with that in the future. But at the same time, you know, we look at our current system at the county. If somebody wants to donate something to the Heritage Museum, we have a motion within our process to accept the gift. Or to make things surplus, we have a motion to take care of that. So again, I think it was very unfortunate that this was a surprise, that there was no communication whatsoever to the rest of us, that a fought the fought, and especially to my colleague Lonnie Napper, whose municipality and the weight group has obviously fought the good fight on this for a long time. So I do welcome the motion, and I do appreciate it, and I hope this never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Napper?
Yeah, thank you very much, Warden Weber. Yeah, there's lots of things I'd like to say, but I'm not going to say them. I think moving forward, we went into this, and we are an unwilling host, and I think you can take Suncor out of the picture. We're unwilling hosts against wind turbines. We weren't unwilling hosts against, what do you call them, Suncor? And I just think this body has lost all its integrity. If you're an unwilling host, you're in for the long run, or you're in there for lip service. And I think the long run is, there's other people coming behind us and larger projects than we've got today, and they look down the road and say, well, these guys are opposing us, they're unwilling hosts, but once we get in there, we'll slip them a few bucks and they'll all go home happy because, but if you think this wind turbines are done in our area, I think it's another thought coming. And I was a little appalled, I guess I did question it, and I wasn't happy with the answers I got when I did ask who approved this thing. I was, well, I'm going to say it, I was told I was a sleazy councillor, I think, in some kind of words, but I don't want to get into that. If I had had an explanation, there was four or five of you folks that could have given me this explanation, like I read in their minutes today, I might have been a lot happier today. But I think this all got blown out of proportion, and I think it could have been a simple explanation as to what went on here. And I did, I was accused of one time of saying, yes, I was in favor accepting this money. Well, that never happened. And I would think that I would accept the money in a heartbeat if they come in and done a decent study on the migrant birds they're killing, or if they replanted the forest they tore up. I could call them good corporate citizens then, but today I can't, and I have trouble accepting this, but I do think moving forward, I'll support the motion that they got here. But...
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Any other comments? Would you like the motion read back? Can I ask the clerk to?
I have it recorded as in the future, all donations or interactions with financial implications pertaining to wind turbines be referred to county council. Is that a fair catch?
Is there a mover and a secondor? Is there a, Counselor Bradley?
Is there any financial or policy decisions related?
Whoever the secondor okay with adding in more policy? Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, Warden Weber, Members of County Council. With regard to the motion and the fact that it's limiting the financials just to wind turbines, I would prefer to see it broadened out. As a member of the creative community, and I've only been on the creative community for about 18 months and learning the process as we go, as I understand it, the policies and procedures and the terms of reference were followed. But that particular creative community was created through the direction of this body. So there will be other cash donations, no doubt, that will come to the creative community. So I believe that there shouldn't be just a one-off. I think that there should be a broader discussion because, as Counselor Case has said, when other cash donations come from various sources, county council signs off on it. So to just isolate one, perhaps I think is the wrong direction. I think if you want to have a broader implication, I think they need that. I think the creative community needs that direction because prior to this, they were following your previous direction. So I just would like to make an amendment to that then, that the future donations, what you have read, Mr. Cribbs, could be broadened out, not to just wind turbines, but all cash donations.
That would be an amendment to the motion. Are you asking for a report on a policy being brought back for acceptance further than that, or you want that included in this motion?
I would like to see...
That it's just for all donations?
No, given the sensitivity of this, I would like to see a policy come back to us so that we have a clear indication of what exactly is happening and how that's going to implement what the creative community does going forward. So because it also states that there is, it is an independent body, separate from political interference, so that has to change as well. There's quite a bit to, besides just doing this one-off.
You have a motion for...
Everything has to be looked at. So my motion is, coming back to what you were referring to, that we give direction under a new policy or perhaps review the terms of reference of how donations are made to the creative community so that we don't fall into this dilemma again.
Okay. Is there a second for that amendment before we go farther? Counselor Hand? Okay. Treasurer would like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a matter of clarification, the original motion applied to any transaction involving the county and industrial wind turbines. Your amendment seems to be directing it or restricting this application to simply the creative counties. Was that the intent?
No, thank you for that. No, I think we have to be broader than that. The reason that I just isolated it to the creative community was falling back on what Counselor Case has said. We do follow that practice. Now, whether we have an actual policy regarding that, I don't know. So I'm at your mercy in that regard. But if we're going to do it for one, we should be doing it for all. So we do have a practice in place with other committees, so now that we have the creative community committee, we need to be able to fall in line with what we've done with all of, to have a generality and not to isolate one from the other.
Counselor Bradley?
This is isolating. This is exactly what Mr. Mayor McCharles' motion is about, which I seconded. It is to send a very clear message. We regret what happened, and we're not going to allow this to happen again on the wind power imposition of industrial turbines in Lampton County. That's the motion that I think you need to support here today. If this committee and others want to bring forward some broader policy, dealing with other issues, do that. But today, we should deal with the very clear message that needs to go out of this room that says clearly that this was not the message we wanted to send, that we support this type of donation after being opposition for so long and through the courts on this issue. So I would just urge you to support the motion if you want to do something further, but don't water it down because if you accept the amendment, you're watering down what the message is supposed to be from this motion.
Procedurally, we have a motion and an amendment on the floor, so I have to either deal with the motion or have that, or deal with the amendment or have the amendment withdrawn, and we deal with the original motion. I would, how does the mover want to deal with this? Do we want to have a separate motion for a further report on a policy being developed?
Converging with the secondor of the amendment, we have decided that we would like that to be separate to the original motion.
Okay.
And we would like to introduce that following whatever happens with this motion. That's on the floor.
So noted that the mover and the secondor have withdrawn the motion at this time, and we will vote on the original motion?
Yes.
Any other discussion on the original motion? Want to read that back once more? The original one?
That in the future, all donations and financial or policy decisions pertaining to industrial wind turbines be referred to county council for its consideration.
Counselor Case?
Record vote, please.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I would call on for a recorded vote. The randomizer has selected Counselor Marriott. Deputy Warden McCharles? Counselor McGugan? Counselor Napper? Counselor Veen? Warden Weaver? Counselor Arnold? Counselor Bucci? Counselor Bradley? Counselor Broad? Counselor Brusowich? Counselor Case? Counselor Cook? Counselor Gilliland? Counselor Gillis? Counselor Hand? And Counselor McGugl? That carries. Motion is carried. Do we want to have that follow-up motion at this time? Would that be in order? Yes. Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Yes, we would like to reintroduce our motion that all cash donations, no, I'm sorry, that we should review our policy with regard to cash donations and apply that policy, so that that policy can be applied to all committees of County Council.
There's a seconder for that? Counselor Hand? Any further discussion? Will be a policy brought back for discussion. Counselor Case?
So I guess, Mr. Warden threw you to staff. We do have a policy in place now when it comes to donations, when it comes to things such as I mentioned before, donations to the museum, art gallery, and so on. I just wonder if there already is something in place that has protected us from that standpoint, being that this committee was arms-length from Council. So I guess the question is, does the current policy do what the mover and secondor are asking for? Being the fact that this creative county fund was looked at as outside and separate to the County Council function. If you could ask, if I could ask for clarification on that, sir, please.
Can we have Mr. Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. There are current policies that are in place. You've seen reporting from staff with regards to this. You know, we do have varying degrees in which it comes up. We have spontaneous cash donations that are made at the art gallery, which, you know, nobody has to approve those before we can say we accept those. Similarly, we have small cash donations that come into the museums and other parts of the organization. Again, we do not ask for any sort of vetting of those before they come in. The only other, you know, time that we've had significant cash donations was with regards to the fundraising for the art gallery. Again, the only one who came forward with that was when we received the proposal from the, from Mr. and Mrs. Alex with regards to offering to provide funds in exchange for naming of the facility. So we have had all sorts of policies and procedures in place in order to address issues that have come forward. In this particular case, if there had been a requirement or a restriction with regards to the use of the funds, for example, if the wind farm had indicated that the monies had to be applied to a specific purpose, or they had to go to, you know, or just a restriction in any way, we would not have accepted that. We would have come forward to Council with regards to the amount that was there. This does not mean that there cannot be a tweaking of the policies and everything else, but make it clear the fact that we have had policies in place in order to protect the interests of Council and to make sure that, you know, the needs and the desires of our residents are respected. This is an example of one that was slightly outside of the box, if you would. The motion that was previously passed has essentially addressed that specific anomaly. So, you know, from a staff perspective, we're confident that we have the policies, procedures, and facilities in place to deal with most other things that we would come up with.
So follow-up if I can. Mr. Warden, so I've been here 16 years, and this is the first time that I've ran into this. So I think there are policies in place. I don't want it to ever get so stringent that we're, you know, somebody throws $10 in the jar at the art gallery or one of the museums. Again, I know that would be silly, and I know that's not the intent of the mover and secondor, I'm sure. But it sounds to me like the policies are in place. Again, I've been here for 16 years. Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but at the same time, it seems to have worked. This was a situation, because it was a committee that was outside the norm of County Council, the mover and secondor and Council has taken care of that today. That will never happen again. So from my standpoint, I think we are in good shape with the policies and procedures we have. Again, as Mr. Ennis said, you can always tweak to make things better. There's always a better way. But those are my comments. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Gillis, it's your motion. I'd like you to speak to it, and...
Thank you. Talking to the secondor and listening to Mr. Ennis' explanation, particularly when it comes to, you mentioned a bit about tweaking. But as it relates to all the other donations that we've received, and we certainly don't want to send out a message that we're not open to donations, it seems like we're good with the way things are right now. So we'll withdraw that motion.
You're going to withdraw the motion? Okay. The secondor has withdrawn the motion. Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I'd like to make a motion that we have staff give us a report on how it works. Like, I know there's different places, whether it's the libraries, whether it's the museums. I would like to see that and a report come back to County Council, so we all understand we're at the same starting spot. So I'll make that a motion, that we just ask for a report on how things work, who's who in the zoo, and what they do.
Seconded by Counselor Gillis. Any discussion on that? All in favor of that? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Sorry we kept sitting up here for so long, but I believe we've made some headway. Thank you. We have a couple more delegations, and then we're going to take a break for a minute. What are we at? Jody Brewer and Sarah Frobber are coming to speak for some financial support, so I call you up within the bar. And I apologize if I messed up your names.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jody, and actually, this is Laura. Laura is one of our parents in our gym. Sarah wasn't able to make it today. We're going to start. We're feeling that we're going to bring you a happier note today after sitting and listening to your meetings. We're here today in order to request support for a handful of our athletes who have earned a bid to the summit. Let me start by telling you about Blue Water Cheer Athletics and some of the benefits of being involved in cheer. We are the only all-star cheer gym in Lampton County. Our athletes range in age from three to 18 years, and come from all over Lampton County. They're Watford, Wyoming, Sombra, Corona, Brights Grove, Sarnia. We offer both competitive and recreational teams, and also have a special needs team in partnership with Pathways Health Center for Children. I'm sure you're aware that there are numerous physical benefits to participation in cheer: increase in strength, coordination, flexibility, and just overall athleticism. In addition, we are proud that we are instilling healthy habits, regular exercise, increased water intake, and healthy eating to fuel the body. There are also even more benefits when you include the social and the work skills they gain by participating in team-based activities. We have numerous parents tell us their child's self-confidence and grades improved dramatically after only six months in our gym. In addition, we are promoting leadership skills, teaching time management, encouraging adaptability, and acceptance of constructive criticism. Our athletes understand accountability and how to work under pressure. We're proud of the fact that we feel like we are contributing positively to our future workforce here in Sarnia-Lampton. At our gym, we provide a safe and healthy environment. Many of our athletes are in the gym five days a week because it's where they want to be. They volunteer to assist with coaching younger teams, they come in for extra practice, or they just come in to be themselves. We have open gyms on Friday nights to offer a safe environment. We have our teenage athletes who say they would rather come into the gym and hang with their friends, or train, exercise, and it gives them an excuse to the peer pressure they feel for going out to parties and everything else. Cheerleading is one of the largest-growing sports, recently being recognized by the Olympic Committee. The summit, which is the competition we're talking about, is a yearly competition held at the end of the season. It's made up of the best of the best teams from level one through restricted five. They actually have a world's competition for the highest levels, so level five to level six. Our gym doesn't have that. We believe in growing our athletes safely. So our athletes right now are levels one through four. The summit is kind of known as the world's for all of the other levels, those levels one through five, restricted. You only get invited to compete if you earn a bid. Statistics show there was a 6% chance of earning a bid in competitions this year, and we earned three of them in our gym. We are the first gym in all of Canada to earn three at the same time. Unfortunately, this comes as an increased cost to our families. Our families have been amazing. They're working together to fundraise through various community-based activities: pasta dinner nights, raffles, we have sponsorship packages, bottle drives, et cetera, you name it. Our parents are working hard to do it. We feel attending this competition is an amazing way to put Lampton County on the map, and also a great way to celebrate Canada's 150th birthday. We know, asking for financial support, and you read it, it says the competition's in Disney. We aren't able to choose where the competition is. The fact that it's in Disney is definitely something that makes it even more expensive. We have families in our gym who are on financial plans with us to ensure that their athlete can still compete and still participate, but we assist them as much as possible. This is an added cost that was not budgeted for them. We have families that are single-parent households that have two athletes in the gym, or families that are the grandparents who have custody of their kids. All of our families, the ones that maybe don't require the support financially as much, are working hard to support all of those other families, so we would like to present to you as a request for additional support. This is a video that was created. One of our family members was able to entice a friend to create this video so that we could help with our sponsorship packages. Blue Water Cheer. Blue Water Cheer Athletics is the first all-star gym for cheerleading in the Sarnia-Lampton area. We've been open for three years. We're in our fourth season. We are composed of about 105 competitive athletes, and then we also run recreation and a special needs program out of our gym. At our most recent competition, two weeks ago in Birch Run, we were surprised and just lucky enough to have earned three bids to the summit. What we found out afterwards is that we are the first gym in Canada to ever have received three bids.
So summit is, in the most basic terms, it's our Olympics. For most cheerleading competitions, you can just sign up and go. For summit, you have to qualify.
They come from all over, whether it be United States, United Kingdom, Canada, a variety of places. It's, the idea is, who they feel is best represented at that competition is chosen, and then you travel down to Disney in May. Costs aren't covered. That's something that the athletes do have to pay. They have to stay right down there for a minimum of three days, because the competition can begin Friday, and it can go until Sunday.
We're looking to raise about $60,000, which is a large amount of money. It's going to be very difficult, but we're going to do our best.
For anybody who is able to offer any type of support, we truly would appreciate it, and thank you. We would love to do anything that we could to help you in future.
Thank you so much to anybody who generously decides to donate to us. We appreciate it more than you know. This was a dream of mine when I was a cheerleader, so the fact that I get to share this with these kids is, I can't even put into words how special that is, and they're never, ever going to forget this. This is once in a lifetime, and we appreciate any support that you give to us.
That's it, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions? I guess this could be referred to the budget process. Would that be the request? If no one has any, Counselor Gillis?
I think we need a motion, don't we, to move it to budget?
If that's the Council's wish to move it to the budget process with a report?
Yes, I would so move.
Seconder for that? Counselor Gilliland? Questions? Counselor Bradley?
Don't worry, you want to be the bad guy, but this issue's come up year after year, so I wanted to make sure that we're not misleading you by referring this to budget. Mr. Ennis? And again, it's, we've always had this philosophy the last number of years that we only fund capital projects or requests, and I think there's one coming up after, not, I guess, operating. So I don't want to mislead these people. If this is referred, will it be recommended by staff?
In response to your question, Counselor Bradley, this does not, this request does not meet the requirement for council grant, so it would not be presented, or there's two options basically available with regards to this. If Council's direction was to consider it as part of the council grant category that we have each year, no, it does not qualify. That being said, it's always been the practice of staff that we do not say no. We can always make a recommendation, because Council always has the right to make a decision to fund an organization if it wished outside of that. So this would be, you know, if it's, it would be, if it was to be funded, it would have to be funded outside of the council grant aspect on an ad hoc basis.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And all in favor of that? Counselor McGugan? We're just... We're sending this to the budget. I think we understand that it doesn't meet the requirements, but that, the grant requirements, and I think they're aware of that, but that would be up to Council. Okay. All in favor of that? Opposed? Let's do that again. All in favor of that? Opposed? I'd say that motion is lost. Question, Counselor McGugan?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Weaver, members of County Council. Thank you for that excellent presentation and enthusiasm that they had. Can you write charitable tax receipts for an individual?
So we do have a sponsorship package letter, which we can absolutely leave here. Actually, I think I saw it almost on your Word program at the top of your video when he was setting that up. So our gym is a for-profit gym. Fundraising that's being done, though, none of it is coming through our gym, so yes, we can write a receipt, but it does not have the HST number or anything attached to it, if that makes sense to you. It is just, so there's, the parents have set up a bank account and absolutely are acknowledging, and also putting on, they have T-shirts that they're going to wear down in the summit, and also for the Canada Day Parade, with the sponsorships on the back, banners being created with the sponsorships. And absolutely, a receipt will come to you that says, whether or not it's claimable, because there's no HST number on it, I'm not sure. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Counselor Bradley?
You know, again, I think the vote was fair because I wouldn't want to mislead you to think that money's going to be there. But we do have the opportunity to sponsor, you know, Lampton County, if this group is to go, that we could be one of the sponsors as requested in this letter, if that would assist. And Mr. Van Horn, I don't want to put you on the spot, but the county has sponsored different events, I believe in the past, you know, as a sponsor, and you get the credit for it, whether it be the Great Lakes Mayor's coming here or other groups. And I just wonder if that's something that's within your discretion to do at the staff level, or do you need direction from us to look at a sponsorship of this group? Because it is, and I think, we get back to this policy criteria, it is an international event, it does bring international recognition to the people participating and to the communities.
It's, in terms of the dollars involved, it's somewhat of a, I'll call it a gray area. When each of the wardens is in office, he or she will be asked for sponsorships for different events. Sometimes it's buying advertising in their publications, that sort of thing. We've never had a problem with it as staff, certainly if it's, you know, kind of under $1,000 sort of thing. With respect to the wardens, again, they typically have operated in that kind of $500 to $2,000 range as well. Beyond that, typically, there's some discomfort with larger amounts, so it gets brought to County Council for consideration. So small amounts, yes, we have discretion, and we have done things like buying ads and publications and that sort of thing, or giving small outside grants potentially, but anything bigger's always come to council.
I'd be willing to move if it helps the warden newly in the position that we look at a gold sponsorship of $1,000. $1,000.
That doesn't, so is that a motion?
Yes.
I think for your own sake, it might be better. I advise that it be a motion. Is there a secondary for that, Counselor Gillis? That we do a gold sponsorship for $1,000, and that gets its name and logo and recognition at the event? Questions on that? All in favor of that? Opposed? That is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Congratulations on your successes so far, and we wish you well in the future in the competition.
Awesome. Thank you.
We have one more, one more grant request, and this is from the Sarnia-Lampton Rebound, and I would ask those folks to come forward now to make that presentation. Do you do handouts? Yeah. Clerk will do that. We'll, they'll, all right, start up. Okay. We need another chair. Yep. Very good. Proceed.
Good morning, everyone.
Oh, have to push the button.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Teri Thomas-Van Oss, and I'm just here to share the work of the Hub. You may remember us from last year. We told you about an idea that we were working on as part of a collaborative with Lampton County, a variety of services and providers. So today, we have an update and to let you know the great things that have been happening and to further support our request for capital funding.
Thank you, Teri. I'm Jaleen Poirier. I was hired as the program coordinator for the Hub. So we started with 21 community partners, and today, we sit with 35 around the table. This is a project that the community wants to invest in and is excited to invest in. Over the last few months, the construction has been ongoing, and it's finally coming to a finish. The dream of the Hub is becoming a reality, and we opened the doors on February 13th. We are open to all youth ages 16 to 24, six days a week. Our hours are 3 to 8, Monday to Friday, and 1 to 9 on Saturdays. Our work as child and youth care workers starts with meeting the youth where they're at and meeting all their basic needs first. We will teach those basic life skills to help the youth better succeed and to be able to be a contributing member of our community. We offer a hot meal every day, as well as a shower facility and laundry as well. We will offer programming all six days, ranging from CMHA, Ontario Works, and St. Clair Child and Youth Services, to baking, budgeting, and martial arts. We run, we run on a youth engagement model as youth are the experts about their own needs. We have a youth advisory committee that meets once a month to see what the community's needs and desires are at that time. The Hub will reflect that by being a supportive, inclusive, and responsive space. Today, we have two of our three youth advisors here, so I'd like to turn the mic over to them.
My name is Shelby Griggs, and I was hired as a youth advisor for the Hub in September. Before I begin, I would like to read a personal story from Shay Lynn, another one of our fellow youth advisors who isn't here today, on her journey with the Hub. Shay Lynn became involved with the Hub in January 2016. She wanted to find a way to help her fellow youth in this community because she was always felt very alone with her mental illness. Shay Lynn struggled with anxiety and depression, Shay Lynn struggled with anxiety and depression during high school and needed to find help. She experienced the process of searching for a place that would help her through her daily struggles, and although she did find a good counselor, she felt as though she didn't have the connection to other youth that she really needed. The Hub is something she holds close to her heart and feels is very important. She expressed that the Hub has given her a chance to help create the ideal space she's always wished that youth like herself could have. She looks forward to seeing how the Hub will benefit the youth in this community.
Good morning. I'm Jonathan Lawrence. I'm very fortunate to have been one of the other youth advisors hired on the Hub project. So as you can see by the timelines in front of you, the project has gone from an idea around a table to a reality in a very short period of time. About six months ago, just before the beginning of Phase 2, we hadn't even finalized the decision for a location for the Hub. Now, we have a space that will be finely tuned, beautifully furnished, and designed to fit the needs of any youth that attend. This project, however, will not merely serve the needs of the youth that attend. It is our hope that the Hub will stand as a symbol of Sarnia-Lampton's exceptional ability to unite to serve a common good.
Growing up as a youth from the county, it's amazing to see this all come together. And I know from personal experience that youths who grew up in the county do not really have accesses to services unless they have a vehicle, and that happens after they're 16, or their parents can bring them, which doesn't happen that often. The Hub will benefit all who are involved. The youth will receive assistance directly and forge positive relationships with peers and volunteers. Will have the enriching opportunity to provide a positive impact in the lives of youth. You may be wondering how we will track the success of the Hub. Even now, the R Lounge continues to track attendance, and the Hub will continue this data collection. In addition, we will track what resources are being utilized by the youth and what materials, hygiene items, office materials, and so forth are being used. But success comes in many forms, and we will also track the progress by noticing successes in the lives of our youth that attend. Improved health or sense of well-being, acquisition of a job, or application for post-secondary school are all examples of such milestones.
So the drop-in nature of the Hub is very intentional in order to serve all youth, no matter what their needs are. In particular, transient, transitional-age youth can best be serviced by such a model. Having services that are located in a single area can help to reduce this transience and add to the stability of the lives of struggling youth. In conclusion, I'd like to tell you a story of another youth that reflects some of the success of this, this drop-in model. So this is Phil's story. This youth utilizes our lounge at Rebound right now and will be moving over to the Hub once it opens. His experience with Rebound began three months ago. This 20-year-old youth was homeless with no hope. He had been to our lounge just once before, about over a year ago, but only stayed for about 20 minutes. He came back to meet a friend there and ended up reconnecting with the program coordinator of the R Lounge. She connected him to resources to help him with what he was struggling through. He started seeing an addictions counselor and getting assistance for housing. He's now searching for employment, but is for now living off social assistance. Since he cannot afford to eat every day, he knows that he can come to our lounge for a hot meal, and later, he will be able to come to the Hub to get showers, laundry services, and connections to other services to help meet his basic needs. He personally told us that our lounge has changed his life for the better, and the staff are great at what they do and really make you feel as though they care about your life, not just their job. This youth also expressed that he feels the Hub is very important and needed within our community. As of today, he is still struggling through some issues. He was on the verge of relapse, but he knew he could come to the R Lounge and vent and feel better in a safe space. He has a place to live now and is going to attend the Hub when Lampton College comes to present about academic upgrading to get set up on the path to post-secondary education in the Child and Youth Care Worker Program at Lampton College. Thank you.
To end, we will know the Hub is successful when youths from Sarnia-Lampton and in the county are receiving the services that they need to help them on their path. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any questions, Counselor Bradley?
I'm going to move the request to Budget.
I think this is because it's a specific grant request that is, will be part of the budget process. Does it need a motion to do that? Yes? Okay. Moved by Counselor Bradley, seconded by Counselor McDougall. Counselor Case?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, I have a question through you to our guest, and again, love Rebound, great organization. I've had a little bit to do with it. Jack Poirier got me involved a little bit on some fundraising back a while ago. Question I have, Lampton County's a big county. I think this is a great idea, and it's really good for the immediate Sarnia and surrounding area as far as what I'm seeing from the Hub. What are your plans to try to engage and bring people in to this Hub from all of the county? Again, very supportive of what you're doing. Don't take it the wrong way, folks. I think it's great, but just interested to see what the, what maybe the strategy is in trying to be able to get other people from outside of the county and being able to utilize this space. I know there's all kinds of situations as far as transportation and all those things. So just a question. Again, thank you.
So, yes, I'm actually very glad that you asked that because that is, that is part of what we're hoping to do with the Hub, is we're recognizing that it is the entire county of Lampton. So one of the items that we are requesting in, in the budgeting is van, a van for transportation, so we can bring in county youth. We're also requesting some electronic services. We're hoping to get some, I believe it's part of a computer lab, so that we can provide electronic services for, for youth, electronic forms, referral forms for youth in the county that might not be able to come in just for those brief intakes.
We're looking to utilize this technology for things such as FaceTime or Skype for those youths who do need the face-to-face contact but can't get to us.
Follow-up, Counselor Case?
Follow-up, Mr. Warden, if I can. Very good answer, and thank you for that. But I would encourage you folks to maybe get out and see the local councils as well because we've had some experience with Rebound, and we've had some information. As I said, Jack Poirier was out to see us not that long ago. Just to maybe brief everybody, of course, us as mayors, we'll go back to our municipalities and tell them, but I think it would be important to further communicate that into the county as best you can. So thank you for your answer, and good luck.
Thank you. Counselor McDougall?
Yes, Warden, Marie Birx, and Members of County Council, and thank you to the Rebound presenters this morning for your presentation. I've had a long knowledge and partnership with Rebound because many years ago, you were located in the community center that I've managed, and I have had great respect for your work and believe that this is a program that is really going to provide critical support to disenfranchised youth, and I'm happy to see that. I've been away from direct affiliation from Rebound, but I have understood in the past that you have had programs that you've done satellite out in the county. Are you still doing that, is my first question? Are you still out in some of the outlying areas, and so you have reached to get to kids directly?
Yes, we still have some satellite programs in, in... Petrolia, and we also have, there's a GPS in Forest, which is our youth engagement council.
Okay. So I understand the business of the $35,000 to purchase a van, and I think that if you do make those connections through Rebound programming out in the county, you can build relationships, and yeah, it's great to have FaceTime, but there is nothing like a hot meal, and there's nothing like real, human, face-to-face contact. And I think that's most of all what I have regarded very highly about Rebound, is we think we can make contact electronically, but when you're in crisis, you need a caring heart, you need somebody to wipe your tears away, and somebody to put some warm food in your belly, and that's really, really important. I do have a question, however, about, the first page talks about operating dollars to support this long-term, and I've had also intimate knowledge of great programs that started with Rebound funded by Trillium, and once the funding ended, boom, there was the end of the programming. How confident is your group that you're going to get your annualized funding so that if we make the investment of public tax dollars into your facility, that you're going to achieve the annualized operating dollars? I read in your report that you have one year, but what's the plan after that? And how, what kind of success have you made towards that end? And the only other thing I'd say is if you do score more success before we get to Budget, please let us know. Okay?
Thank you. Have another comment?
Respond to that. So we are very excited to let you know, and I will provide an update post this meeting. But on February 10th, we have actually been asked by the LIN and the Ministry of Children and Youth Services for a tour of the Hub prior to the grand opening on the 13th. So we have some interest and hopefully some potential annualized dollars that will come as a result of that partnership or that inquiry. The other thing I can just let council know is that we are just on the final stages, hopefully this afternoon, as we meet with the Youth Advisory Committee, to extend another member of the committee to include Access Open Minds, which is a Pan-Canada Children's Mental Health Initiative that's looking to standardize children's mental health access and evaluation to service, and have them come on board as a committee member as well. And so they've had the great advantage of being able to leverage other funding throughout other provinces across Ontario. So we're very excited that their association with our Hub will help advance and secure annualized dollars.
Follow-up, Counselor McDougall?
Thank you very much for your response to that. Have you an annualized operating budget predicted for the future yet?
So what we have at, what we have at this point is a projection because the doors don't actually open until February 13th. So we do have an anticipated cost that we will incur this year, and I mean, it's somewhat difficult to fully predict based on volume and utilization and other unexpected expenses that we will be able to make more accurate projections going forward to anticipate a fully, a very fulsome annualized budget.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to refer this to Budget. All in favor of that? That is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We will...
We'll continue on, and I'm going to call for a five-minute recess here. We've had a, no recess? We've got to take a break. We've been here for two hours, so I will bang the gavel in six minutes. Don't jump, Robin. I said, I said six minutes. That's your two-minute warning. On December 2nd, how does council want to deal with those? Moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor Cook. Any questions on those two sets of minutes? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Correspondents, we have item A is a power generation and a Pickering Nuclear Power Station. Item B is Elizabeth Wood McDonald regarding public meeting a draft plan. Item C is municipal and stakeholder relations and the assessment update for municipal summary report. Item D is Physician Recruitment Task Force. Also have a letter of concern from January 24th regarding the plan and a letter from Cohen-Hiley regarding the draft plan. How does council want to deal with those items of correspondence? Counselor Bean? Seconded by Counselor McCharles. Questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Information reports, item 11 on page 142 of the agenda regarding the Green Committee Activity Report. Looking for a motion to receive and file. Counselor Case?
I think it's good to report.
Seconded by Counselor Boucher. Any other questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Items not requiring a motion, that their information, item number 12 on page 148 of Counselor Gillis?
Receive and file.
Moved to receive and file. Seconded, Counselor Bean? Any questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Item 13, Corporate Services Division. This is a report regarding the BRNI Connect to Innovation application. There's a recommendation in that report. Am I going too quick? There's a recommendation at the end of that that council endorsed the attached letter of support. Counselor McGugan?
Move.
Moving that recommendation. Seconded. Counselor Bean? Questions? Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Mary, very much, Warden Weaver. Just in your note, you speak about wardens involved, and I just, you're number five warden that's been involved in that initiative, and the first one, and our CAO, Ron Van Horn, will remember our previous warden, Jim Burns, I believe was even the one that introduced this concept at the Western Wardens, and it was based a lot going back into what the Eastern Wardens did. And then when I took the mantle over from Jim, we got into very many heated discussions over the amount of transfer speed. And the Western Wardens, they were stuck on 10 megabits per second was the maximum that they were endorsing, and I was digging in pretty hard at 1 gigabyte. And so now as, as things evolved and, and Warden Case and the work that he did, and then Warden McDougal made sure that the 1 gigabyte stayed and became part of the norm, and I appreciate all the work that's gone on. I also appreciate the Blue Water folks and their initiative going forward. I understand too, and I appreciate that the majority of the members of county council are stakeholders and shareholders in the Blue Water Initiative that's being applied for as far as this grant. And I guess my concern is that this grant that they're applying for is going to be in direct competition with my municipality, who's been working now for eight years in regards to high-speed internet. We also have spent $50,000 for this grant itself. The first was the engineering that we went out and did on our own, and the second is in regards to consulting fees that we're paying now to have the application finalized. And hopefully with some wisdom from the federal government folks who have volunteered their services to review the application before it goes in to ensure we haven't missed anything, then we may be a successful community. And I say that because we are an underserviced area in our part of the community that we are looking at. No one else came to the table over these eight years that could do anything for the people in the south end of my community. Blue Water Power, I did meet with them a couple of months ago now, and our initial meeting was that, you know, they wanted to try and help us out in St. Clair Township, but they said it'd be five years before they got there. And that was one of the things propelled us as a community to move forward on our own because we cannot wait five years to get proper connectivity for our people. And I, I noticed that Mayor McGugan was the one that made this motion, but I also understand that in Brook Telecom, they're applying into the same grant program. So, you know, there's a, to me, there's a conflict, but I don't know for sure. However, I'm not going to stand in anyone's way as far as a letter of support, but I would ask that you would recognize me after we have a vote on this, and I'm going to ask for a letter of support from this council for the efforts of my own council at home in their application process.
Thank you. Counselor McDougal?
Yes, Warden Weaver and members of county council, and Steve, I thank you for your discussion here this morning and also some of the discussions we've had previously. SWIFT broadband project of, of Western Wardens that county council knows received funding discussed the Connect to Innovate program at our last board meeting, and the SWIFT Board and its executive director are encouraging all people applying for funding to work with SWIFT, which is how I first came back and talked to Counselor Arnold about making sure that they had all the support that they needed. And I think letters of support are important. I'm understanding through SWIFT that the Connect and through my discussions with Counselor Arnold, that letters of support from the community are going to be very, very important to all proponents applying, so that I'm going to be enthusiastically supporting the county of Lampton, providing letters to anybody applying because we're here for all 11 members of the Federation, and anybody and any group that is, any municipality that's trying to increase their funding opportunities and their service to their people to that last mile challenge should be supported. So this first letter is great, Warden Weaver, but you're probably going to have to sign a few more before you're finished. And I did appreciate Mr. Cribs, I believe, who said that this letter of support to the Blue Water Regional Network was non-binding, non-exclusive letter of support from Lampton County. So, you know, it's sort of a, it's a support for the application, but at the end of the day, SWIFT wants to support its partners who are trying to increase connectivity, and I think it's important that we do the same at the upper tier. So I think that this is a timely discussion, and I think it's important that we don't limit ourselves to this application only because while it seems to be suggesting its umbrella, clearly in the case of St. Clair Township, it's not. And for all the two years that I have been in discussion with the small independents, we wanted a fair and a fair process that wasn't going to squeeze anybody out. So this Connect to Innovate program needs to support in a similar fashion, any and all who are trying to increase their funding.
Thank you. Mr. Van Horn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Further to the comments from Counselor Arnold and McDougal, staff had the same concern as has been raised about whether if we supported one application, we were harming others in the community. And we were assured and very strong, no, no exceptions that, that it would not. They encouraged everybody who has any opportunity at all in their community to, to make application for the grant money, and that would be favorably viewed by, by anybody along, along the chain of command in terms of approval of the grant. So we had the same concern. It was very clear, made very clear to us that, that you're not harming one group by supporting another, and that anyone who has any interest in it at all should be trying to get approvals from, from bodies such as the county government.
Follow-up, Counselor McDougal?
If I could just, as I was reviewing this material last night, has the county then had a chance to see the Blue Water Regional Network application, or are they just looking for support upfront? Because I've understood from SWIFT and also in my conversation with Counselor Arnold that this is a pretty laborious application process. So has the county had a chance to see this application yet that we're supporting?
Certainly I have not. I don't believe that staff have had an opportunity to review it. Like, we're quite cognizant of the fact that Blue Water Power only has services in whatever percent of the county in terms of the geography, so it's really up to them to put the case together.
Counselor Case?
Just a very quick point, not to belabor this whole thing, but, Mr. Warden, now that you're part of the Western Wardens Caucus, I guess maybe we'll look forward to hearing from you and maybe what's going on with SWIFT in the future and over the next two years because I think we have to keep an eye on the ball when it comes to that organization from timelines and so on. So I'll just leave that comment with you, sir, and look forward to hearing back from you. Thank you.
I will try to do that. Counselor Napper?
Yes, can I just get a little clarification on this? In the last two weeks, I must have received at least 60 emails asking to support this, and I was confused as to where it was coming from, like, but this, they seem to have a lot of support from all over the county there on this.
Yes, I received the same emails, I believe, and they were computer-generated.
From the discussion that I had with one reply. Any other discussion on the motion? It's for the recommendation. All in favor of that? That is carried. And a further motion, Counselor Arnold?
I would humbly ask that county council provide a letter of support to the St. Clair Township application for this funding as well.
Seconded by Counselor Broad. Questions? All in favor? That's carried. And we're moving on to committee minutes, and Counselor Arnold had to leave. So AM committee minutes, I would call on Chair, who did AM?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Warden, Warden Weaver and members of county council. I see the confusion with my name. I see the confusion with my name. As Chair of the AM Committee, we met on January the 18th. We discussed and debated for about an hour and a half with very fruitful discussions and debate, and I present these minutes for your consideration.
Thank you. Item one, correspondence received and filed. Any questions? Item two, there's one that correspondence to be denied. Item three, Counsel Broad.
Thank you, Warden Weaver and members of Council.
I have a question on this, on item three, and I also have a recommendation. Question on item three, and it's unfortunate Steve's not here. I believe when this report was asked where the money went to for this, where the tree planting money went to, Steve brought up the indication that the staff, sorry, St. Clair Region staff wages was to come out of this money, and I didn't see where that was addressed in that report. I presume Steve was around when this money was first allocated out, and I presume that's where he got that information from. So if somebody from staff could give us an indication whether that was part of the original agreement with this money.
Who would like to speak to that? Mr. Cole?
Counsel Broad through the Warden. Yes, your understanding, whether that was part of the original request or not, I do recall there being some discussion around that. The focus of that report certainly addressed many of the concerns that had been brought forward about how we were proceeding with review and assessment of the lots and how those were being, the costs that were being associated with it. The specific report and the discussion that was had back at the committee meeting didn't specifically go further into the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority partnership. But if that's something that council wants to delve into further, we can certainly do that.
Just to follow up on that, yes, I think we should go further with it, because I know the request made seven, eight months ago was where did that money go and what was it being used for? So I think we should follow through with that request, and let's find out where that money does go and what it's being used for. I do see the tree planting part of it, but if it's supposed to go towards the wages of the St. Clair Region staff, why aren't we putting it there? Next follow-up that I have is I have a recommendation. As you can well imagine, there was a great report there of a parcel of land out in my municipality that was being bulldozed and cleared. It went through the process, great process. What my recommendation is, the local council needs to know that information ahead of time. Because as you could well imagine, excavator moves in, bulldozer moves in, and all of a sudden I'm getting these phone calls about this bushlot, why is it being cleared? All this information. Well, of course, then I start the process, calling the county to find out why. My recommendation is that before this, as this has been approved, and once it's been approved, that the report and the recommendation gets sent down to the local council that is affected by the decision, so that we have the information there for when the rate payers or whoever calls us, that we have that information available to us. Thank you.
Okay, so.
I'd like to make that a motion.
Make it a motion. Counselor Case has seconded that. Are we clear what the motion is for? It's for a further report, I believe, on where the costings and the dollars are going to, as well as communication process for notifying local municipalities.
After decisions have been made.
After decisions have been made. Any other questions? All in favor of that motion? That's carried. We can make motions while we're doing the minutes? Is that's proper procedures? Okay. Item number four, regarding the road reconstruction update. Item number five is correspondence. Item number six, information report on the virus, Zika virus. Item number seven, regarding safe roads winter driving campaign. Item number eight, request for surplus ambulance donations. Item nine, progress of the resident withdrawal management detox center. We've had our discussion on that this morning. Item 10 is the resident withdrawal management again. Item 11, correspondence. Item 12, Makerspace Project update. Item 13, Canada's tentative list for the World Heritage Site. Item 14, county's asset management plan budget process. Counsel, number 15 is the in-camera item. 16 and 17 is to open up. Item 18 for the adjournment. Seeing no further questions, I would call on Counsel Gillis.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I ask that the minutes with the changes be approved by this council.
Seconded for that, Counsel McDougall. Questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. The PM committee minutes, Counsel McDougall to present those.
Warden Weaver, members of County Council, the afternoon committee with the very long name of Long-Term Care, Finance, Facilities, Court, and Social Services met on the afternoon of January 18th, 2017, and I present to you the day's minutes.
Item ones, correspondence. Item two, quality resident inspections. Item three, correspondence. Item four, regarding fees and fee schedules. Item five, correspondence. Number six, asset management plan. Number seven is the year-end report on reserves. Number eight, correspondence from social services. Number nine, information reports. Number 10, regarding Lampton College pilot projects. Number 11 is in camera. 12, 13, and 14 are dealt with in camera. Item 15 and 16 is the motion to adjourn. Any questions? Counsel McDougall.
Warden Weaver, members of County Council, I move the adoption of that day's minutes.
Seconded for that, Counsel Veen. Questions? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. We have the Creative County Committee minutes. I guess I would call on the Chair, Counsel McDougall, to present those minutes.
Warden Weaver and members of County Council, the Creative County Committee met on the morning of January 23rd, 2017, and I would present to you that day's minutes for information for council.
I don't believe we adopt these minutes. These are just received for information. So if that's, that is your motion that they be received for information, is there a second for that? Counsel Napper?
Any questions on them? Counsel Napper?
I'd like to thank the committee for a well-written report here, and it certainly answered a lot of my questions I had. If I'd had this report back at the start of this whole fiasco, it would have saved a lot of problems. And I hope this report was available at that time and not written after. Thank you.
Good, thank you. I think there'll be revisions addressing the concerns. You have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. The one motion in particular is motion number three, and it speaks to the ability to accept independent cash donations. But the wording's going to have to be amended to make it comply with the motion that was passed earlier this morning. So the motion would have added on to the bottom something to the effect of it being subject to any acceptance or reporting restrictions placed on it by County Council. So we won't end up with the set of minutes that are in conflict potentially with what you passed earlier then.
Okay. Counsel Gillis?
Yes, so I'd like to make that amendment. I noticed that right away.
Do we amend these minutes, or does the committee?
Or do we make a new motion?
Okay. We move that we amend these minutes to reflect the decision of County Council this morning.
Exactly.
Seconded for that. Counsel McCharles?
Point of order, Madam Minister of the Chair. The, is this correct? Like, we'd be accepting these minutes as is, and then any further amendment has already been made by this council to go forward to the next, as opposed to amending the minutes of the minute of the meeting now? Can we do that?
You're certainly capable. Someone's got to turn off his mic. Go for it. In a narrow, technical sense, the minutes are reflections of what was said that day. So from that perspective, yes, it's the committee that created them that should be amending the minutes. But as a practical matter, everything ultimately, the buck stops here always, and you can amend the instructions or the decision of that committee so that it be in compliance with your wishes. Right now, as it reads, it conflicts with what you've already approved this morning. So we certainly want to address or absolve that. So if we rephrase that slightly to say that you're not amending the minutes, but you're amending council's instruction, we'll be fine, for instance.
Counsel Case?
Not to prolong this, we've had lots of discussion, but I don't think you can do that under the Roberts rules. I think the minutes are the minutes, and they stay the minutes of that day. We've now made a motion today to change the process moving forward. I could be wrong, but I'm a little confused, because under the Roberts rules, again, we're going back in time. It'd be great if I could do that in lots of decisions in my life. I may have turned out better than I have. But at the same time, I just, I guess I'm asking, I'm asking you as clerk to advise us on that, because all the time I've been involved with chairing, I've never seen that done before. So thank you, Mr. Warden.
The question comes to the challenge of how it is that committee reports to this council and its terms of reference. Are you simply receiving and filing these minutes? Or are you actually approving? Because your committee AM and PM, everyone's got a good handle, that half of you make decisions, it comes here, and then the other half, you as a whole, can vary as you wish. If you're simply receiving and filing, if it's not subject to your control. That's what the warden said. That is what the warden said. You're correct. But ultimately, this is a body that you've created, and in fact, its relationship to this council is something that it was considering at that last meeting, and where obviously you've considered it this morning as well. So that answers Counsel Case's immediate question. It's the nature of your relationship and what you want that to be to this committee that says whether or not you can amend that, or you just have to receive those minutes. But regardless, you've passed a motion with which it has to comply in the future.
I guess I've been asked on a point of order, and I'm going to rule, I think we are receiving these minutes as a receive and file under the terms of reference from the Creative County Committee that has been in place since its creation. There is some recommendations in there about changing the reporting method and going forward, and whether we approve them or whether we don't will be part of what council decides when we make those changes. So the motion on the floor is just to receive these for information at this time, and.
Yes, point of order to your point of order, if I may.
Point of order to mine, that's good.
It does, the terms of reference, do you say that the Creative Committee is functioning independently? So Counsel Case is quite right.
So these minutes are being received as for information as they have been presented by the committee. All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you. And they will go back to the committee, and they will deal with the county motion at the committee. So that's, and change their terms. We have one more, we've passed around, we've had our striking committee prior between the in-camera session. So I would call on, in the absence of Chair Arnold, Deputy Warden McCharles to present these minutes for our approval.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Members of County Council, the striking committee met this morning, and I present the minutes for your consideration.
Sec, there's no second. Item number one. Item number two, and item number three. Any questions? Deputy Warden McCharles?
I move the adoption of this day's minutes.
Seconded, Counsel Broad. Any further questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Item number 15 is items tabled from previous meetings. This is regarding the draft official plan consultation, and where am I on this one? There's been a request from the committee. Counsel McDougall?
Yes, Warden Weaver, members of County Council, if you're looking for somebody to move the recommendation from the report February 1st from the OP Review Committee.
Yep.
Then I'd be pleased to move that for you.
Seconded by Counsel Cook. Any questions to that? Committee's doing great work and going through the process, going page by page. It's taking some time on this recommendation of tables until then. We have to lift it from the table first? Okay, procedurally, we need the motion to lift it from the table. Counsel Case, seconded by Counsel Marriott. All in favor of that? That's carried. Oh, we need a motion to accept the recommendation which extends the deadline to April 5th. Moved by Counsel Veen, seconded by Counsel Han. Questions? All in, Counsel Napper?
Does the committee feel that's a long enough period of time for the model work? It's got to be done yet?
I guess that was the feeling at the committee the day we were there. We are two-thirds of the way through it, or more, and I think we can come back with that. All in favor of the motion? That's carried. Thank you. So we did the tables and lifting, notices of motion. I see none listed. Other business? We've dealt with the striking committee. Notice of bylaws. What am I doing back? Yep.
Do you have a motion to approach the striking committee?
Yeah. We did the striking committee minutes. Counsel McCharles, and who seconded the striking committee? Sorry, Counsel Rod. Maybe I'm, we'll get in rhythm here. Anyway, notice of bylaws. Oh, have a question? Counsel McGugan?
I have a question. It's just new business. I would like to say thanks for whoever, I guess it's the culture group that made that Makerspace Program around the county. I did have a chance to attend it at my local library. It was well-attended by young people and middle-aged and some older people. And, I mean, I'm baffled by that whole system, but there were as young boys and girls there four-years-old playing with the marbles, and they made them work. So I say thanks, whoever made that all happen. I think it's just great as we look down the road to the future, and there'll be some parts of that whole program, I understand, in every library for the rest of this year and next year. Hopefully, I'm correct in that. So I say thanks.
That's well noted. It's moving around, so Counsel Napper?
Yeah, just a reminder to all County Councilors, there's a rural game meeting following this meeting when it gets over.
Today. Any other new business or public service announcements? Notice of bylaws. Call in the clerk.
Thank you, Warden. There are four bylaws before County Council this morning, three substantive and one confirming. There is also a motion moved by Counsel Gillen and seconded by Counsel Cook that bylaws numbers four through seven of 2017 is circulated, be taken as read a first and second time.
All in favor? That's carried.
Warden, there's also a motion moved by Counsel Veen and seconded by Counsel Napper that bylaws numbers four through seven of 2017 is circulated, be taken as read a third time and finally passed.
Questions? All in. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And we have the adjournment. It's a note on here that the OGRA meeting, or OGRA conference is the day before or the day of this meeting. The budget meeting is scheduled to start at 9:00. If council wishes to move it to 1:00 or keep it at 9, we will have to be back from those that are going to the OGRA conference. Councillor Case?
I will make that motion to move it to 1:00. We'll see if we get a second or any discussion on that, Mr. Warden.
Seconded by Councillor Gilliland. Any questions or discussion? We have procedures-wise, the ability to make notice and do that?
Yep.
Any question?
Yes, is that sufficient time? There could be adverse weather conditions and so on, so I'm not sure whether the time picked is actually be helpful if we have some adverse weather conditions. Well, but why cancel the meeting when we can move it a little bit further out?
Maybe bad weather then, too, Andy.
No, but you've got a time.
The motion is to move it to 1:00, because I guess we'll deal with weather when weather happens. Councillor Napper?
What's the expectation? How long do you feel we're going to set aside for doing the budget? Is it going to be one day, or two days, or three days? This way, you're cutting it down to a half a day, and you're going to have to come back for another meeting.
Mr. Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To answer Councillor Napper's question, as has been our practice for as long as I've been here and potentially longer, we set aside a Wednesday morning traditionally to discuss the budget. We do have a second day. That would be the Thursday of the following week, which is already set up in the calendar as a tentative date if additional discussion is required. So the short answer would be that if you move the meeting to 1:00 and you reach a point where you feel that you need to cease discussions for that day and defer it to a second day, we already have a second day set up and ready to go.
Motion's on the floor to move the budget meeting from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM to help out with the Good Roads Convention. Councillor Gillis?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I do have a question, not with regarding to the timing, but because we're in a new process, could someone refresh my memory as to when we're actually going to receive the budget books?
Between the committee meetings in February.
So they're in two weeks? So we're only going to have two weeks to review the budget? Okay, good to know.
Okay. Councillor Bukowicz?
I'm going back again to it, because I believe the program is running till about noon on Wednesday. So is that our expectation? We'll be able to make it in an hour back? Well, I would just mention, I may be forced to get my own private helicopter or something, because, you know...
Councillor Case?
I have made the motion, and again, there's a motion on the floor, but in talking to my seatmate here, who is on the Roma, pardon me, on the Good Roads Board, it will make it very impossible for him to make it back. So in fairness, again, I know, I would withdraw my motion if the second would do so, too, because in fairness to him, he is on that, he is elected to that organization to represent us, and in fairness to him, he should have the opportunity to be part of the budget. So I will remove my motion, let anybody else want to suggest another time or day, they can deal out another motion if the second is okay with that. Very good. So I'll remove that. Sorry, Mr. Warden.
Okay. Motion's withdrawn. Councillor Veen?
I would like to entertain a motion, Mr. Warden, that we change it to Thursday. I don't understand why Thursday isn't... I mean, I'll make that motion, that we'll do it Thursday at 9:00 AM, if that's all right with everyone.
It's been seconded?
Sorry, is that Thursday, March 2nd?
Yes. Councillor Broad?
Thanks. I think we need to be fair to John. We better check to make sure that Thursday's going to work with John, too.
And another, yeah. Any other questions? It's been asked to move to Thursday morning at 9:00 AM. That'll give us a full day if we need it. All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you very much. And that was the motion to adjourn. Councillor Veen and Councillor Broad, all in favor? That's carried. The old Canada.